Ladies and gentlemen, please silence your electronics for this meeting. Here he is, here he is. This regular meeting of the Mayor Board of Commissioners for the City of Lakeland is now open for transactional business pursuant to a term. Any persons having business with this body draw near and give attention if you shall be heard. The Honorable Mayor Mike Cunningham has presided. Please stand for the implications of the floor.
Thank you so much for this time we can come together and help govern this town. Lord, I pray that tonight the conversation will be civil and you just grant us wisdom to help find Lincoln forward and find solutions for anything we have coming our way. Thank you for this time. Pray just leave God's direction. Use His name to pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Let's get on with the business. This is the work session for next week's actual Board of Commissioners meeting. So, have a recorder if you would, please come for us.
Mayor Cunningham?
Here.
Vice Mayor Ron?
Here.
Commissioner Dowd?
Here.
Commissioner Menzel?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
All right. Let's go business under the public here inside on the next agenda item. With it being done, we will move on to the Treasurers' Report.
That will be at the next Board of Commissioners voting session.
Okay, that'll be, let's hit that.
Yes, sir.
Next Thursday night. All right, fantastic. Ready for that. The reports from committees, members of the Board of Commissioners. I know the deputy's not here tonight because this is a work session. So, we do have the crime report. I believe Kyle, oh, sorry, Shane published that wherever we want to see it on the web, or did he just send that to us? You just sent that to us? Okay. So, we'll have the deputy here next, who else did that? Next week to go over the report with us. I don't think he can be here at the work session and the regular VOC, so we'll forego that tonight. Shane, unless you have anything specific, I'll let you.
I can either present tonight or tomorrow or next week, whichever. I was gonna give you an update, current update on USDA. You can do that now.
That would be good. That would be really good. Help us for next week.
Sure. So, the current, this is something obviously that changes kind of hour by hour. We have a number of folks that are working very diligently between myself and Will and Kyle and Dr. Horrell and his team and all of the USDA folks were working obviously to get this to the finish line. As you know, we had a hiccup with the publishing of the first notice. So, we have gone through the process of republishing the notice in a commercial appeal. That notice ran August 21, 22, and 23, which started the 14-day public comment process again. So, that process concluded yesterday was our 14th day. So, we did not receive any written or verbal comments. USDA did not receive any written or verbal comments. So, the next item on our checklist is the filing of no significant impact. That's a document that USDA generates, sends to us, and it's a one-day posting in the paper again. Once that is accomplished, and we hope to have that in our hands as soon as possible, we're kind of like playing tennis, the ball's back in USDA's court, if you will. So, we're waiting to get that back from them. We anticipate, obviously, running that as soon as we get it. And hopefully, the plan is to have USDA here on site at some point next week to execute and have the mayor hopefully available to execute the letter of conditions or obligation so we can get these funds obligated and ready to go in time for, hopefully in time for our meeting next Thursday so we can officially set the tax rate with that letter in hand. So, that's the ideal game plan, and we're still working toward that. PFM and Butler Snow are currently also working on a RFP for interim financing to work with local banks, regional banks that have the capability of providing this sort of financing. We're looking at a three-year interim note, if you will, to get this funding underway. So, we're still moving in a good direction. Certainly, we would have rather had this done a couple of weeks ago, but ultimately, that's not how it worked out. But we're still in a place where, between Will and I, we're in constant contact with the trustees office as well. I think we've shared with you a couple of times that they have, believe they have tested a automated process that they feel like is viable. So, once we get this rate set, it's simply a matter of sending it over to them. They will input the rate and print off the new tax notices, send them out accordingly, and have that available online so people can start taking it online as well. So, they think a two-week turnaround time. So, again, backing up our date of October 1st, we still think that there's, this is all still doable in our current time sequencing to make sure that the tax rate is set by October 1st as required by state statute. Also, just wanted to quickly say, we had a Lincoln Chamber meeting this afternoon. Just wanted to let everyone know that the Chamber golf outing is coming up Monday, September 30, at 11:00 a.m. at Stonebridge. I think the last count, we're up to 87 golfers. I think they want to try to get up to 110 and max out the number of available carts. So, there's still some room if you want to take Monday off and really support Lakeland's school system where this is essentially a fundraiser for. So, that's exciting, and we're looking forward to another great golf outing on Monday, September 30. So, they're really the two things I wanted to highlight for now and answer any questions that you might have. I don't know if Will, if you want to chime in at all as well, but both Will and I have been, feel sometimes that we're on the phone with USDA multiple times a day, but we want to make sure that this is following through accordingly to make sure that we get it done.
I think Shane, Shane weighs the timeline, anticipated timeline very well, and unless there's any questions, I won't have to take additional ahead other than to say, again, I want to change it. The ball's out in Lakeland's court, so to speak. So, we've been reaching out to everybody. We know we have to do, once we get the Fonzie, have to publish it in the commercial field one day. We've been in contact with them, in contact with the trustees office, and let them know a, anticipate a second reading on the 12th, setting our tax rate within the past calendar so they can make preparations as well as encouraging, let's say USDA, to get Fonzie to us as soon as possible.
Fantastic. Thank you, buddy. Hold those Commissioners' Reports until the actual meeting. I think that's probably why that's left off here. Public comments, the next item on the agenda. Do you have anyone fill out any comment cards? Nobody wants to speak?
Can I say something real quick?
Well, sure.
I did want you to fill out a form.
No, I was gonna make a statement as well. Sure, I'll let you go ahead. You can have it.
I just wanted to take this opportunity to recognize the Lakeland School System for their accomplishments. And starting with Superintendent Ted Horrell as their great leader, trickling down to the Board of Education, who has been quite, you know, they really take it seriously working for the quality of what our school system has become. Triple down there to the school administration, congratulations to Mr. Adler and to Mrs. Lockhart. She's a former coworker of mine, I'm really proud for her. Then to the teachers, they're, they've got boots on the ground every day, and it's not an easy job, and they have helped to accomplish this great recognition that they have obtained. And then to the parents who help get the kids to school every day and make sure that they are ready to learn and ready to do their homework at night and attend functions that help with the culture and the climate of the school that has become comfortable and loving and happy, and it's a great place to be. And then finally, to the kids, they're not, they're not last on the list, but I want to recognize them the most because they're the ones that actually take those tests. They work hard to prepare for those tests, and the results of those tests shine brightly on them because they're the ones that really deserve the recognition. But everyone that comes before them in that hierarchy are to be commended as well, and I wanted to take this opportunity to say that publicly. I'm very proud of you, and as an educator, it warms my heart to see the district doing such great things and bringing this recognition to our city. And I know our high school is going to shine just as brightly, and I'm anxious to see what we're going to see from the Lakeland School System in the next few years. So, thank you, Mayor Cunningham.
Absolutely.
Just gonna say, we've got Mr. Burnett in the audience with us, so he'll take that back. We appreciate it.
Well, thank you for stealing my thunder.
No, I'm sorry.
No, I was gonna make, I was gonna make a public statement next month at the regular VOC, but after taking such a lashing as I've been taken on social media, I feel like tonight's the night to speak up. I appreciate you stepping up there and bringing this out for everyone. This is the one thing that's the shining star of the city. No one can deny that. No one can be a naysayer of that. Number one and number two in the state, I mean, my gosh, what better way to say, hey, Lakeland's doing things right? We might disagree on a lot of things, but the one thing when it comes to education is the one thing that we're doing right as a city. So, I want to publicly thank Dr. Horrell and Principal Adler and Lockhart for leading the charge to get us to this point. There's not one politician up here or that serves this city that can say they're the ones that are the reason why our schools are underwound too. It is the leadership, it's the teachers, it's the students, it's the parents. It takes all of that to make a school system work. So, I know Mr. Adler personally. I've known him since he taught my son's chemistry at Bolton when they were there. He was also their bowling coach. They were on the bowling team with him. He's an outstanding leader, and I greatly appreciate him. Ms. Lockhart, I can't say enough about her. I've never seen her in a bad mood or down. She's always happy and joyful, and I believe that equates to what our kids see and gives them such a positive outlook on coming to school and actually learning. The one thing that was a takeaway for me when I got into adult education where I worked for several years during my career is education's two parts. It takes a willing teacher and a willing student. So, we are to be commended as a city that we have that. We have willing teachers and willing students that want to come to school and learn. So many of the problems that happen around this great United States are education-based. If we can get our kids on the right path early on and we can grow them all the way through a 12, K through 12 system, I believe that we'll be the shining star at Shelby County, if not the whole of state, and people will want to come here just for that. I've talked to many people and have many friends that say they moved to Lakeland for LES, the elementary school, for those years, all of those years, and now that's, you know, taking itself upon the middle school and will eventually make it into the high school. And that's something to be proud of, but I'm not gonna sit here and take credit for that. I don't believe any politician should. I believe the thanks go to the leadership and the students and the teachers and the parents, and I just wanted to say that publicly. We all need to get behind this and make this our shining beacon, and everything else will work itself out around that. So, I just want to say thank you, especially to the leadership board making all this happen. All right. And I'm gonna actually get with Shane this week and see if we can come up with some way to thank the leadership and come up with something we can do for the teachers and the students so that everybody can share this and we can make this great publicity for the city. Anyway, we'll move on from that to Sewridge Commission business. We usually never have anything on that right now anyway, so we'll skip over that, and we'll move on into the regular part of the agenda for next week. And I'll ask, have a recorder, if she will begin by reading what consent agenda.
I approve a lot of minutes from previous meetings. Where do we need this office to pay during the month?
Second.
We're just putting it to the floor for discussion. We're not gonna follow it. It's just open for discussion. That's pretty much protocol for bringing the minutes from the previous meetings up in the consent environment. And I think we'll just keep the consent agenda open. If we find some things throughout the rest of the regular agenda tonight, we can all agree to put that on the consent agenda to speed up next week's meeting. So, let's move on to the regular agenda items.
Number one, ordinance, final review, amended fiscal year 2019 through 2023, passed by the ordinance, nineteen, minus two seventy-five, on May 19, 2019.
All right, thank you. The floor's open for discussion. Anybody have any thoughts, ideas? I know there was a lot of discussion on this last month when we had the first reading. So, I'll entertain anyone that wants to talk about where we're at. Last month, we approved $1.20, setting the rate app, I guess in subsequent conversations, trying to get our heads wrapped around where we were in the budget at the 125 versus 120 versus I've seen numbers that goes to 116 for a balanced budget kind of thing. I guess I'll kind of start some discussion because I'd like us to at least be thinking, you know, towards the future. Trust me, I'm all for keeping the tax rate as low as possible because it affects my wallet like it does everyone else's here. But I do believe that, you know, we do have to look at what's the best business decision for the taxpayers and the city as a whole. I think we were juggling the numbers around back and forth and, you know, having a spirited conversation over 120 versus 125. I think if you look at how things shake out, because I know for the capital outlay notice, we had PFM actually pull $300,000 out of our road budget, and there were some other criteria set there which would have given us numbers low enough to go to the 120. So, I think we need to be honest with the citizens out there and say, do you want us to restore the road budget back up at 300,000? If we do, that's gonna affect the rate. So, you know, where do we want, as to, you know, the body up here elected to figure all this out, do we want to go with the budget of 120? I know we're looking at some expenses that are in the budget for the road to K D Soul Park. It was last month presented, and that was about $152,000, $154,000 that we'll have to find for somewhere. Definitely want to get our heads around the security cameras. That's a well-needed thing for the city from a security standpoint, and we're talking somewhere in the $70,000 range, and I don't know if that's all the costs associated with that or not.
Right, right now, on the next, we for next month, maybe something lower than that.
Okay. I just want to, you know, be aware that we're gonna have some other things come up this year that we're gonna want to do, and if we set the rate too low just to meet the budget as it sits, then we're not thinking futuristic to where we can actually do these other things that will benefit the city. So, I just want to make sure we all understand, you know, I'd love for the taxes to be free, but we know that's not gonna happen. But anyway, I wouldn't thank any other.
Yeah, like, just jump in here. Only if they gave you $176,000 for roads, would that make a difference to you? What, on your ability to do with these permanent roads in the city?
Well, maybe any amount that just allows you to do more.
If you take it back to a 125, that five cents will give you $166,000 of the change. And living in a neighborhood where my roads fall apart, I know you're doing the best you can, but the folks in my neighborhood and the neighborhood next to me are really tired of it, and they're asking repairs. We know you can't pay us, but we're in, you know, maybe the repairs are the minimum. I understand why. But I think, boy, we could need to consider putting five cents back in there if nothing else for roads. I know that the comments, Commissioner Ron, it's been high during the past few years, but it's also been neglected, you know, and it's nobody's fault sitting up here right now. But the amount of work we have done on our roads has been lacking, and we've been paying, we've been playing catch-up ever since we decided to do something about it. And we're not there yet. Another pit road neighborhood over there, their roads are a mess. And I just think that, you know, looking at the, looking at what we need to do for taxpayers, and they'll understand that the taxpayers are used to it. Cut it back a nickel, and I believe it's like the most conservative guy up here, and I, I'm all for that task. But the base point of 125, the base of work, I think that's what we need to say. I understand Commissioner Ron is not rich, his numbers are high. I'll disagree with him, but I just think, you know, our infrastructure of our city is lacking, and we need every penny we can get, and if we pay it back to 125, we'll help. That's what we need to do.
Close the floor on that discussion, and we'll move on to Resolution Two, please.
Resolution authorizing a minimum of understanding between the City of Lakeland and the Lakeland School System.
You actually have the copy of the draft, you know, between the city and the school system. I will try to respond to any questions you have. I would say this is not gone before the school board yet. It is, of course, just a first draft that sets forth basic parameters for the transfer of the $700,000 a year for years that the school board is committed to, and also includes the transfer of money from the city to the school system. Basically, operationally, the same way, excuse me, that the middle school project was built. The school system wanted to get all of the money, let's say, on the front end so that they had it in their bank account, making control over city operation and the high school. So, that's, that's the draft that is before you. Of course, if that's not what this board wants to do, we can change this draft before it goes to the school board. I'll answer any questions you may have.
My first question is, who wrote this, you know, the school board or you?
It's back and forth between the two of us. Again, the transfer all at once is driven in large part in two reasons. One is what the school wanted, and that's how it worked in the past. Again, operationally, though, that's not all the hassle work, but what's in the first draft. I will say, in conversations, although I can't give precise numbers because it hasn't gone to bid yet, likely you get a fixed rate by getting the money at once. Interest rates are strange right now. Actually get a lower rate by having a fixed rate as opposed to a variable system that you went to, say you want to go to a draw system where we get 5 million or 10 million at a time and then transfer it on some set schedule to the school board, we likely would pay a higher rate on that interim financing. So, perhaps the cost savings wouldn't be as great as you may initially think because, again, you pay a higher rate on whatever money you're accruing if you're getting it in chunks. But again, not something I can give you a complete picture of, but just something to tuck it back in mind because that surprised me whenever I was talking about it.
That's something we need to know because if you give the school board $40 million now, it would came tomorrow. If I understand, understanding, if we're processing correctly, the city has to go back to construction loan, which we've paid interest on, which is $7 million, I believe, on the interest rate over a couple of years, three years for the construction loan.
Yes, you can think of the interim financing that's been discussed is essentially the construction loan that you're talking about, where we put out many RFQ, RFV, makes will come to us, and they're really not underwriting the City of Lakeland as opposed to underwriting USDA based on the obligation letter that we anticipated in the next week or so. And so, because of that, you're going to get favorable rates. Exactly what, I can't tell you because it hasn't gone market yet, and we don't, we don't have that information back. But we did get some contact unsolicited, and both people heard that the project's going on and reached out to us and say, we've got some interest. Here's back to that kind of numbers. We'll get favorable rates because it's run through USDA on that interim financing or construction loan, so to speak. But your point is, you would be paying, if you take all the money out, you're paying interest on whatever you take out. And depending on the structure of that interim financing, you may pay a little bit different rates. But, you know, I can't give you those numbers because we don't have, they haven't, they haven't been out to bid yet.
So, if they gave us the money, the school board gets $40 million, $40 million they put in the bank, draw a bunch of money, correct? That's what they'll do. I had nothing wrong with that. I sure would.
If, no, certainly. We, as drafted, as this first draft looks, if the board approves this next week and you pass forward through the interim financing period, we get the money, we then present to this agreement that this board, or this board have to approve. If you approve it as drafted, then yes, we transfer that $40 million there from the city side, accruing interest on that drawdown. I guess presumably the school board would invest that somehow. Yeah, and your general point, right.
So, why can't the city give that? And then, and then just start paying for the construction of the school, because my problems are that money?
That's kind of what it alluded to. There's, there's no reason the city cannot. As currently drafted, it's based on the way it worked operationally last time, and that's the school's request. This is what they want it to look like. They want to get the money so that they're gonna be the ones running the project. They don't want to run into, I guess, situations where they're asking for additional draws or something slower on the schedule. But again, it's just a draft that's open for discussion and input from the board of this board because it's not a decision that will matter for change. It's put a draft forward based on what most recently the US board said.
My point would be, ultimately, this is taxpayer dollars. There's no reason why that $40 million doesn't stay in the City of Lakeland's bank account and let us draw the interest on it because we're gonna be paying the interest on it. So, there's no reason why we didn't, we don't become the savings account for the school to get bids, build the school, and take draws out from us and let us be the beneficiary of holding the money. It is taxpayer dollars. So, for us to turn this over to the school system, I think that is not a good way to protect taxpayer dollars. Let's say the school comes in, let's say the school came in at 37.5 or 38.8, that's $2 million we can pay against debt service right there, and that's taxpayer dollars right back against taxpayer debt. So, I have a little bit of concern to just take $40 million and turn it over to somebody else and let them run the project. I think that, like I said, since it's taxpayer dollars, that we are ultimately responsible to be good stewards of that, and I think that's probably what is best for making this happen. So, yeah.
I was just gonna say that I think we're a little premature on it only because we don't have the numbers in front of us, and so I would, I would recommend just pulling it from this month's agenda and bring it back when we actually have some idea of the numbers, and that, and then we can see what the opportunity costs are, what they may or may not be. So, I'm obviously all for getting this. We have the verbal handshake agreement. We know that how this could work in theory, but until we have the real numbers, it's really tough to make a decision. So, I would recommend pulling this until we, until we actually get it out.
That's very good, I think.
That makes sense to me. That makes sense to me also.
I agree.
See what happens.
I told you, we had an initial draft, and just to start getting more input, I'm perfectly fine waiting until we have bids out, interim financing. I will say, that's probably not next month. That's a few months down the road, just from a timing perspective.
Just one final point, but just keep in mind that, you know, when we went through this process on the USDA on the citizens, we asked them not to protest this loan, so everything would go smoothly. And I think it has, and I don't want to throw any wrenches into work, the school board, with the latest thing. But the school board needs to rest assured, okay, every penny from us, we're not, you know, no questions asked. We're not going, you know, we're not going to ask for, you know, why do you want this? I just think a lot easier is, as Mary said, chuck the money and tie it to the money. And we think we need to let the city use that money to do all the things that comes from the school.
Bring back after the interim financing, if they get out the hard numbers, is that? Do you mind raising a price?
I believe that would be, would let us make a better decision, for sure.
Fair. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Will.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Board, if you would, please, Resolution Three.
Resolution approving a contract with Michael Street LLC for emergency removal and cutting jobs.
Emily, you wanted to stay up there for the next two.
I'll do that. So this contract has been for you now for the third time. Last month, I came back because I had made a type of error on the resolution and the amount was the previous contract. And when we went back to the contractor, they decided to pull out of it completely. So we had to redo it. We didn't have an alternate bidder. We had to rebid it. We've done that, and so the low bid, we had three bids this time. The low bid was Michael Street and Loader, two sixty-five an hour, which is about half of what was on the original contract. So that worked well. We've worked, Michael Street and Loader's had this contract in the past and worked fine with them. So hopefully, this will be the last time I have to repeat for another three years. Are there any questions about this contract?
Yeah, I'm surprised. Is that low? Is that so, is that a crew of two or three guys? And they just came to the same area and?
Right. So it's a per-hour rate, per crew. So I set up, there are multiple lines, but for the bidding process, I set up certain parameters for a crew. So it would be a certain piece of equipment and a supervisor and leg roof with chainsaws. And so it's a per-crew, per-hour rate. So depending on the size of the event, that would be per crew. And that's how FEMA wants it, kind of set up if you're looking for reimbursement for them.
Awesome. Emily, any objection to putting that on the consent agenda? If you would, Madam Board, please make note to put that on the consent agenda for next, next week. And if you would, please go ahead and read Resolution Four.
Resolution approving that contract with Inscore LLC for fiscal year twenty, and a chair of four.
Okay, this project is a number of point repairs on our sewer, mostly where the services come into the main line. There's failures, so I believe there's one, two, three, four, five locations where we'll be doing kind of repairs. I'll have to dig down on them, make the repair, and then, of course, pack fill. So the contract, we only had one bidder in score. They've been our contractor on many projects lately. And their, their out was one thirty-six, two forty. We have it budgeted in the sewer fund capital expenses this year, so. Are there any questions about this project?
So I know you want to bid on your budget. Is that below your budget?
The budget was one fifty, so yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Any objection to moving that to the consent agenda as well? All right. Madam Board, if you would, please, read Resolution Four, the consent agenda for next Thursday. And if you would, please read Resolution Number Five.
Resolution approving the purchase of a grid classifier for BAM two, not from BAM two.
So this is a piece of equipment at the wastewater treatment plant that needs to be replaced. We had two bidders, and because it includes the installation of the equipment, the low bidder did not have a contractor's license, and it's above twenty-five thousand. So they got kind of pushed out of the award because of that. So BAM two is who we are proposing to award the contract to. They do have a contractor's license, and they've actually done some work at the treatment plant for us in the past. So.
Good results.
Yes.
What was the difference in these two bids?
Dollar amount, the lowest bid was seventy-two thousand eight hundred. The higher bid was ninety-eight, six seventy-five. So that's the difference in, I suppose, the contractor cost.
And assuming not a liability, and I'll let you.
Right.
You have licenses, it must definitely cost a lot of work and business. Is that in our budget?
Yes.
Just double check.
I always let you know if it's typically everything that I bring is in the budget. If it's not, I'll definitely let you know.
Please, one more sound on the board on the period.
That's it. Good question. Any thoughts of possibly this to the consent agenda? We're going to go to that. Madam Board, if you would, please, Number Five to the consent for next week. You've got a lot to read to the consent agenda for next Thursday. All right, and, now, Emily, you're still up there. Would you please read Resolution Six, Madam Board?
Resolution approving a contract with Payton Technology, but asphalt rejuvenating project.
Okay, so this is a pavement preservation method. This product is called a rejuvenator, and it's proprietary to this company pavement technology. And so what it does is it restores kind of the natural oils and binder that's in the pavement that's just, over time, you know, temperatures and weather and traffic and all those things tend to wear. And so once the, it starts wearing from the top, then you get moisture being down under the pavement, and you get potholes. So I have looked at this in the past, and we have not used it here, but it has been used widely in other municipalities in Shelby County. So this year, I decided to do a few of the roads that we had done. I think it was in two thousand eighteen, we did Woodbridge and Fairway Meadows, one in spring, one in the fall. So those were, those are kind of the older of the new pavement that we've done so far. So they would be a good candidate for this product. It's typically put down from when you lay the asphalt to maybe five years. So it needs to be fairly new asphalt that you put it on. But it will extend to like five to seven years, sometimes more than that. So, so I'd like to try to use it on those roads to help preserve some of the newer pavement that we've already put down. And I would like to continue to do that annually as we do pavement projects and also do these. It's relatively inexpensive. It's like eighty-eight cents a yard. So we would be able to do both of these subdivisions for a little less than sixty thousand.
Yeah, this is not the same process as used to where now Ivy Creek.
No, it's a very, very different product.
You all sat aside at the foot of Ivy Creek.
So far, yeah. And, and Winston Farm.
Winston Farm, too.
Yeah. Yeah, this is a very different product. It's not, it's not going to turn the pavement black. It's nothing like that. It just puts that, puts that oils and binder back. It sort of soaks into the top of the asphalt.
Kind of like a sealant.
Well, it's not really a sealant. They don't, they don't call it, it's not a sealant because it doesn't seal. It, it just restores asphalt kind of to its original mix.
Sure.
Emily, I think people would be surprised to know that we're able to do some of these forward-thinking ideas in the budget that we have. I was hoping that next week, there's been a lot of talk about our straight budget. If you could do a presentation that provides this level of detail on what actually we hope to do with the current fiscal year twenty-two budget.
I can bring that.
While we're talking pavement, I just had a thought. About a week or so ago, I was heading up north of Jackson, Tennessee, in the Medina, Tennessee area. And out the highway, there was a crew process going where they literally ground the pavement up. And it was a series of about five trucks. It picks it up, it cleans it, does whatever. And then as the trucks go over, it's like, it almost looks like a train going down one lane of the road, over the highway. It literally recycles the pavement right there on site in the machines. And they were laying the new pavement down behind it. Is that something we could possibly look into? Is it cost-effective to do that? I don't know. I just found it very interesting to go drive and pass there going, oh my God, they're grinding it up in the front of this thing, and there's five or six of these tractor-trailer looking things. And at the end, they're putting down brand-new pavement and steamroller without hauling it, you know, running and hauling it and recycling it back from the plant. It's literally a plant going down the street. So I'd love to know if that is cost-effective. But if rural Tennessee is using that, then obviously it's cheaper. Or they don't have a plant close enough to them to get stuff to them. So I'd like to see if we can look into that.
Yeah, it may be both. I mean, we've, I've seen, I've seen that product before. I've seen, I've sat in webinars and things like that on that type of product. And I think it's typically used on really large projects because it has so much equipment. And they still have the mix, so you can't have, you can only have so much recycled asphalt in the mix. And our guidelines are in line with TDI. I think it's twenty-five percent recycled asphalt pavement. And so the rest of it has to be virgin asphalt pavement to make it a good mix, you know, something that's going to last. So I don't know that with our, I have not looked at it for ours. I've just bid in as a straight mill and overlay. And I would guess that it's probably just because ours are smaller compared to like a highway operation where there are a really long stretch of straight road. Just like when they pay on three and five, they just have asphalt trucks backed up. And they just go, they don't, they rarely stop. They just keep, you know, putting it in the hopper. So we just don't have the room to run that kind of operation in a subdivision. But, but I can look at it and see.
I don't know what a subdivision would be.
Yeah.
Like some of our longer roads. I think it just.
Some of the main roads, yeah.
Piqued my curiosity, and I'm like, wow, that looks rather extreme, but you would think it would cost a fortune, but I don't know. So I'm just curious to see what's forward of that. I think that might be where the pavement's going, who knows?
Yeah. I can look at it further and see if it would apply to some of our projects.
Just a thought. Thank you. All right. Want to move that to the consent agenda as well? Madam Board, could you make that note? If you would, please, read Resolution Seven.
Resolution considering the transportation or training grant. Application for Canada Road pedestrian and bike trail improvements phase two.
So you all are aware that we have a TAP grant currently through TDI for what turned into phase one of the bike head trail improvements on Canada Road. And the reason why we have a phase two that didn't get included in phase one is because they required us to replace all of the ADA grants on, on Canada Road from sixty-four all the way to the interstate. So, so that took out the trail that we had planned on doing from Canada down Monroe all the way to the behind the conservation area of Lake District where there will be trails going through there. So the next round of TAP funding is, is up. The way, kind of the timing for this, and the reason why I would bring it now is because it just takes a long time to get grant funds and to get through the process and even to get to the point of construction. We're still waiting on our funds to be obligated from federal highway for the phase one piece. So, so we would like to go on and apply at least for the grant. We may or may not get it. If we do get it, the award will most likely happen, I would say, no sooner than December, maybe January. And we have three years to, to take that to construction as far as bid. So that would be, obligating it for construction would be bidding it. So we have three years to do that. So I wanted to bring that to you all and request that we're able to submit that application if you all want to report that project.
Absolutely. Any thoughts?
If you don't mind a presentation on this next week, too, real quick, because I'm kind of confused about phase one. So it's kind of hard for me to say, hey, let's go ask for more money. And I don't really know where we are in phase one. So, you know, I don't, I don't have a problem.
Yeah, I can bring some.
Eighty percent free money. But we'd like to see where we are.
Sure. Yeah, I can bring some.
You didn't know what our twenty percent obligation is, for sure.
And it's been a while since I've shown you either the visuals from phase one because we've just been waiting on environmental and then waiting on the funding to get obligated this picking up a year and a half. So.
Fantastic. I like the concept that completes a loop.
Right. Yeah, that was our whole purpose.
I like that. It's trying to, like, fulfilling the walkability that we've been talking about for so long. Next, different areas are like, so it's great.
All right. Fantastic. All right. Thank you, Emily. And Madam Board, if you would, just. She's going to do a presentation on that next, or next week, and we'll actually go through that as a write-up resolution. All right. If you would, read Number Eight, please.
Resolution authorizing a marriage-executing contract with Sheridan County, Tennessee for ADA improvements designated for more than par using community development block grant funds.
Mr. Brim?
This is something we had actually already budgeted before. We've been awarded the grant. I believe that came in July. Earlier this summer, we were awarded the grant. Originally, we weren't supposed to get the funding until next fiscal year. Shelby County went back and kind of tallied up some money they had from under budget projects. They actually have the money available this year. So they are ready to move forward with the project. So we've already got it built in the budget. It was going to be paid for this year, reimbursed next year. Now it can be paid for and reimbursed this year. So we just want to go ahead and get the contract executed and get it started on that project.
And where they do?
We're going to put an inclusive playground in Zadie Cool Park.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's all passed up.
Yeah, and it's a hundred percent. There's no matching business. It's trade two hundred thousand dollars. From Shelby County, it has to be this topic.
And I don't want you to stay late next week for this, but if you could include a picture that, that maybe the city manager would be able to report, that'd be great.
Okay. I mean, we don't have a plan, but do you want like examples?
Like an example, so we'll.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, I got you.
Just a concept.
Yeah, we'll do that somewhere. Yeah.
We'll leave that as a write-up resolution, so that we can see that.
Yeah, just so you all know, at our First Citizens Advisory Board committee meeting later this month, Kevin is going to present to them the time consumption that it takes to actually walk a project through from beginning to end, especially with the grant process. And Emily, you alluded to it earlier in your presentation about the walkability, about the waiting. You, you get through one step, and then you wait, and then you get to another step, and you wait. Just so the citizens have a better idea of, of the projects we're doing. It's not that we're delaying projects. It's not that we don't want them completed. It's once you get those grant funds, there, as we've seen with USDA, there are a bunch of boxes to check, and a lot of waiting periods and things like that. And so I'm sure Kevin will be able to highlight those things from the citizens on that board. And I'm looking forward to seeing that. And I really appreciate you stepping up to do that for us.
Yeah, Madam Board.
Thank you.
That could come on into play this year. That's awesome. All right. Madam Board, if you would, please, read the first discussion item. Keep Kevin up on the podium.
Discussion on Recreation Heartland. Imagine the calm association, real superstar soccer, and the junior grizzlies.
Apologize for not having the attachments on the agenda ahead of time, but I've already moved the contracts for our recreation competitive soccer program and the junior grizzlies program that I've been a part of for the past several years. Just wanted to bring it before you guys, kind of look it over if you have any questions or about entering the contract with those guys again for another year, both football and the Grizzlies. They've been great partners, they bring great product to the community. It's a good bonus for the basketball program, especially they get to go to a game. They get to participate in game activities. They get a jersey, a basketball. Other committees from the Grizzlies.
other, uh, committees from the grizzlies as well. Um, and they, there's a large amount of money, you know, coming in from registration that we do pay out to the grizzlies or, uh, the international football association program. So obviously we just wanted to bring it to you guys to check over and answer any questions you might have.
So we have a junior grizzlies agreement.
Yes.
And then we have a sports program agreement.
Yes.
And then there's something else.
There should be another, so they do sports program agreements. One is rec and one is competitive. If you look on the back, one side will be blank and the other one will have information on the back. There's total difference.
What are the back?
Yeah, so yeah, one back will be blank, the other one left, uh, soccer agreement, and the other back will have, uh, information on the, on the very last page. They're, they're very similar, um, with the contracts and I'm happy to email on again.
Yeah, we'll, we'll read that. That's.
Can you talk a little bit about the timing? I was under the impression that this was already done. That's not the negative thing. I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure I understand kind of where we are with the timing, how long this is here and before, because as you know, I have some strong ideas and passion about, you know, what I would like to see the soccer program, you know, with how to represent length. But so I'm just wondering, I'm just curious kind of the logistics of where we are now and, uh, and then if you could also talk a little bit about how you made sure that this contract is.
Yeah, um, so the soccer one is done. Technically, these are the things that we do just through the programs and the city manager. We just as a courtesy to you, without bringing to you, and it honestly should have been sooner. It's been a lot of moving parts we've played and trying to keep deadlines, cause the contract inspired and getting the new season up and rolling. Uh, but yes, the soccer one is technically done. Um, and, uh, something, it's only a year long. We do it year by year right now. Um, in order, if we do have changes we wanna make, then next year I'd be not being bringing to you sooner. So if we do have, you know, things that we wanna look to do, we can definitely look into that. Uh, we talk with the program, we try to work things out, making sure we're all on the same page. Everybody's happy with what we're gonna do moving forward. So that's what we definitely do. Now, the junior grizzlies one has not been executed yet. So that was one, if you do desire changes, that can be made. Like I said, that, they've been great to work with. I have no issues with them, but obviously I'm open to any suggestions you might have for that. Uh, and as for the enforcement, you know, obviously we try to stay on top of the terms in the contract. Um, you know, when things are brought to our attention, we recheck the program. Uh, try to figure out either where the disconnect is or what's going wrong with it and address it. Um, obviously some things slip through because we're not out at all for functions. You know, we rely on them to cover all the program. Uh, but we do try to enforce everything within the contract. Um, and same with them, you know, we, it's one of probably the most audited programs, cause obviously we have our budget line and then they keep drafting theirs to make sure that the correct amount of money is exchanged in hands. So that's one of those where it's looked over by five different people, you know, for budget reasons. Um, so it's very, very tight with that.
The field agreement with the schools, I was under the impression it was done or about to be done as far as that little area. Can you talk a little about that?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we're ready to go.
And who uses it, when, like that kinda thing?
Yeah, we're ready to go with that. The MAU has been signed. Uh, the guys went out there last week and load. We took the goals over there. Um, I do understand one of the schools is broken. He's to try to get a welder to fix that. Uh, but other than that, they are ready to go. Um, and we've been in contact with Alex. He was out there, showed him the area, kind of went over the ground a little, what the school expects of us. Um, so as far as I know, those are ready to go and they're allowed to be used. He might just have another chance to get things set up, but it will be used by the competitive programs, both the boys and girls teams throughout the week. Um, we have submitted a schedule to the school and I'm happy to send it to you guys if you would like it, uh, just what they anticipate the times of practices each week and who's gonna be out there.
Yeah, I don't know who, whoever worked on that, but that is, uh, you know, we've been reeling our hands for two or three years trying to find something and, you know, I appreciate it to everyone's work, commission, uh, city manager, you know, Mr. Rooney. And I mean, they, they've been kind of looking forward, you know, some sort of answer and, um, whether it's short term or not, you know, having some place in progress is a big deal. So. I don't, this, these are, this is a part of government that you can't underestimate the importance. A lot of things we kind of overlook and we take for granted. But this little thing here, you know, finding a place with this place is a big deal. So thank you all very much.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I had no idea that was there. You know, I've been over to the school a hundred times and, you know, with the grass growing up, you just assume it's just dirt, you know, out there. But when Ted took us, took me out there and I saw how level it was and that it was pretty much a perfect field, you know, they were on the board to let us use it. We're, we're thankful for that. We're happy that the kids are able to kinda get the correct type of training they need, you know, to excel with the program. So obviously if they look good, it makes the city look good.
Sure. Shay, um, maybe not next month, but maybe the month after. If you, if you don't mind, I would like to get a resolution sponsored by me on the agenda about, go ahead, starting the conversation earlier about the contract negotiations for next year, cause I would like, um, parks and rec and whoever else to be more of a design phase as opposed to a reactionary, more of a proactive, what would we like to see happen with this program? And so if we could start that, you know, if it were so few or five months, I would agree with that. I, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
The parks and rec, we appreciate that as well.
Well, I think the parents and, and the, the athletes and participants would agree to that. I mean, it's, you know, we've been reaching for buy a resolution. I think this adds to the collaborative spirit between the city and the school. Uh, and just further solidifies, you know, how great we can be if we really put our heads together and, and think collaboratively. It's the right thing to do. So kids will have a safe place to go, you know. You don't have to worry about being anywhere really. School's a pretty safe place and, uh, that, that deal is absolutely perfect for that use and I can't thank the school board and Dr. Horle enough to offer that up. I believe, like I said, it's the right thing to do for everybody involved. So certainly appreciate all the hard work on that.
Any other question?
Appreciate it.
Fantastic. Thank you, Kevin. All right, now recorder, if you would please read the discussion item number ten.
Discussion on highway safety and safety concerns.
Mr. Brim?
All right, um, so as everyone probably knows, there was a tragic accident, um, recently, almost right in front of city halls. Several of our guys came out and saw the scene and, um, uh, I get constant messages, emails about many things and, and one of the that I get most of is about safety issues on seventy, on cyclines. It's, it's a, seventy's a beautiful thing that it, it's rolling hills and, and, but it's also a safety issue. So as many people experience as they turn out on C-Tick, you say a little prayer.
Yes.
Especially on C-Tick.
Did you ever read that?
Whether you're turning right onto seventy from C-Tick going north or a state, a state you're going to turn left onto C-Tick from seventy. It's kinda like a go-no-go situation. Um, cyclines issued there as well as Evergreen. Um, some things are forthcoming. Uh, eventually we'll have a light at C-Tick, uh, cause C-Tick will be expanded northward into Lakeland Meadows. Eventually Evergreen will dead end there on the south end, uh, so it won't connect to seventy. And those are two things that will help deceleration lane in front of his command or. But there are other, I mean, beyond that, there's that concern, uh, just the design itself because, um, there's, it's a four lane. Uh, instead of a five, five would be safer having a turn lane. That's, that's a T-DOT thing that's further down the road. I just kinda wanna get out there. What, what solution could we have? And I think you mentioned one. There's course ones. There may be one possible solution. No matter what it's a striping, it could be restriping seventy, but it could be reducing, uh, one lane. So go to three. That's something that I've talked to people and they're like, wow, I'm not sure about that, cause then you have maybe more congestion and maybe even crazier driving. People trying to go around or and go left in, in the turning lane. So I, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that's the solution either. But I want people to understand, we, we're very much aware of the safety issues, um, and the blind spots and the, the cycline issues with, uh, seventy and the speeding. And we have requested, um, I know I, I shot, I sent an email to Shelby County uh, about adding some patrol, you know, some, those few spots I know where they can be at a safe place and they can monitor and put out radar, uh, to slow people down. Kinda like. Yeah, just off the edge?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, so that would be, that would be a big help, just reducing the speeding. I think we also requested seeing if we can reduce the speeding. Um, and that I think there's a contingency there where T-DOT would prefer, is it greater density? Cause you know, when seventy cuts through Arlington, it goes down to forty. And I was wondering what, what would, what would help T-DOT understand, listen, we have, we have safety issues here. I was wondering if you can chime in.
Cause they're actually having a lane in Arlington.
Yeah, they're, the right side.
I believe there's been a signal here. Um, I've talked to, um, the traffic engineer for T-DOT, um, extensively on seventy over the last few years and he and I are, are on the same page that these would be five lanes. That's a lot, that's a long project. That's like a, a new Canada Road type project. So with every new development coming in, we're getting more right of way when they come in, but, um, but there's still, you know, T-DOT would have to acquire the right of way from all the individual properties on both sides of the road. Um, and then you have to do the full environmental assessment and it's not a, it's not a quick thing. It is something that I put in the NPO's long range plan. So that's one step closer. So to get federal funding, it has to be in their long range plan. So it's there. It'll be adopted in September. Um, so that's one step. We're requiring right of way, that's another step. But in the interim, I mean, I think really enforcement is, is kind of the biggest thing. Um, I, I think a lot of it is distracted driving and speeding. I get passed, you know, doing fifty-five and I get passed regularly. So, um, I think that, that engineering wise, if, if we're traveling the speed limit, then the road's not as much of a safety hazard as people walking sixteen, seven and looking on their phone or, or whatever. You know, you have to be paying attention. So, um, there, in front of Kensington, that is gonna be why we have a turn lane. It's not a decel lane, it's a turn lane in the middle. So it'll be a five intersection there.
Okay. Um, I know as population grows, seventy's one of the more fast growing corridors, cause you have Lakeland Meadows, Lakeland Green eventually, you have Lakeland Commons. Uh, that's just three things right there. I know that'll increase more traffic and, and population moving around. And, uh, as well as neighborhoods that may be growing off Chambers Chapel, they might try and choose seventy versus going, you know, another route. So I'm just thinking, um, T-DOT could move up the timeline in there. I don't know what their timeline is. Would you like to guess?
Well, so they don't, they don't really have a timeline right now. So we're just trying to start acquiring right of way. I'll have to start working on trying to get it put in either, so their, their funding is through what's called a STIP. Ours is a TIP. If we try to do it locally managed, it'll probably move faster, but we have to pay an eighty percent match. If T-DOT does it, it's T-DOT's money. So, um, you know, what are we willing to, to buy off on that? But you're still talking, even if we started, you know, this year, you're talking, I mean, five years before you probably go to construction.
How is Lakeland Commons gonna help or not help?
So Lakeland Commons is required to put in a signal, which will also be, uh, an expanded intersection. So it'll have dead day turn lanes. Um, and they have a decel lane on their side of seventy. And they're also realigning C-Tick. They're realigning C-Ticks so that it comes in perpendicular to seventy instead of kind of a weird.
So there's gonna be a stoplight at C-Tick at seventy?
There will be.
In the very near future, is Lakeland Commons is hoping to be.
They're only in phase, well, they're phase one. So it's not proposed in phase one, it's in phase two.
Two is two.
Yeah.
I think the easiest comparison for those of us that have lived in this area all their life like me is if you look at Germantown, they've struggled with Poplar Avenue. You can go still see where they're putting in subdivisions where the trees come right out to, you know, the actual right of way. So I know that's been twenty plus thirty years getting, you know, Poplar Avenue to where it's six lanes now most of the way through. But, uh, I know there are still places where they're still struggling to get it completed. So.
Yeah.
Anything we can do to accelerate that, T-DOT, I know this is a love to, you know, just make a care of especially, so.
Yeah. Do they give reports of the accidents and especially the fatalities to know that this area is becoming treacherous for us?
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure that they do. Um, they still, um, I've talked to them about reducing the speed limit. They're not interested in reducing it below fifty. I mean, the safety difference on sixty-four, so they did reduce sixty-four to fifty between, I think it's Cobb to Berry, oh, is it? Is where it drops to forty-five. So, but they would not go to forty-five. They went to.
What's their reasoning?
I mean, they're basing it on traffic analysis. So they're doing an analysis of the road and what, and what is the rate speed limit for that road and the way that road was built.
Well, so C-Tick going, obviously expanding C-Tick northward and having a length there, wouldn't it give them motivation to lower it? Cause otherwise you're gonna have probably a greater chance of wrecks right there, just cause they're going at a higher speed. Wouldn't it be better if you just get ahead of that? You see what I'm saying?
Well, with an additional, with an initial signal, I mean, you're probably gonna see it slower, cause you've got Canada Road, C-Tick.
The signal's great, cause it slows down that stretch for the, there's no, nothing at all. It would just block, right? I think C-Tick will be a big help, but I'm just wondering, do you have, do you have to slow it down up to that, you know, saying?
Just gotta say, we, I don't know how formal this was, but they were supposed to have a set aside for us as part of Lakeland Commons, uh, we had discussed a second fire station or something being there. If that's not in our plans anymore, are there some way to trade with that land and to do the lights faster? I mean, I think maybe if, if the light's that important, then once we're turned, we should probably take a look at negotiating what we can do to help the process.
And it's in the TIP, so it's funded by the TIP. I don't know, um, exactly the reasoning why the component off the case, other than they said they didn't feel like it was gonna be needed due to their increase in traffic. They did not feel like it was needed in their traffic engineer.
That's the biggest thing.
Also.
I ain't gonna turn left on seventy.
I think, yeah, I mean, they've got an entrance. Where most of their development is happening is on this connector road, um, that is west of C-Tick. And so I think looking at it from a traffic analysis, they're thinking most people are most likely to use that connector road rather, you know, for that, that little area, very tail on the multifamily, they're gonna use that connection, either Memphis Arlington or seventy. Um, so they're not gonna be using C-Tick as much as, because they have to go out of their way to get to that light.
I've got a personal interest in Austin. My sister got smacked on seventy about a year ago in September. I'd also like to maybe take a discussion of Canada Road, we have this issue over there. They're three for Salads here this year. Uh, a couple heading off, most likely also. And then, uh, I guess you know, the other day, Dr. Green's board was involved in hitting on, on sixty-four. And, uh, I don't know what it is. Sixty-four is terrible. I still have it. I just don't go in after it. But, um, we got some crazy drivers in the city. I don't know why. Being passed on Canada Road, you know, people crossing double line to pass, you know, you're one thirty-five. I've seen the extra signs up there. But I still think we need to look at four-way, three-way stops along there, still, still Canada Road, New Canada Road up and down. They just, you know, that's, that's probably Canada Road's speed, you know, people.
When can we find out, the approval was hoping to come around September, right? And so we should be running out of recent.
For?
Do you think it'll already go to?
Uh, yeah, so the TIP is, is what it's in. So the construction funding is in the TIP. It was a four-year plan. So it is, in September, the NPO will approve the TIP. So that is next meeting, next weekend. Yeah, so they'll approve the funding and then we'll have to be, we're still working on getting the right of way certified. And Texas Gas has their alternate design, it's supposed to be, to be by October, um, for their relocation of their utilities. So those things are still kinda hanging out there. We've gotta get our environmental re-certified, but that shouldn't take too long.
Will you, will you tell me if all the stars lined up every month or twenty-one?
Probably before, yeah, before we start construction. The environmental is, you know, three, four, five months or so. Um, we're still, like the right of way, once we get the documents to T-DOT, it's been taking them sometimes between four and six months to review it and give us the, the paper that says that they certify it and allow us to go the next phase. And then, like I said, Texas Gas is due to me in October, that design.
We know you're gonna all you can do then. We know you're doing all you can do to, to fix this, but medicaid in the short term. I think we need to look at Canada Road and so.
I mean, I think the enforcement, we've seen Shelby County out there a lot lately and I've noticed that it's, it's made a huge difference. I can't think of, so typically, you know, an intersection would be a four-way intersection. You put a stop. We don't have any four-ways on Canada Road until you get.
Well, we actually, we make three ways a second.
People don't run the, they don't run the stoplight.
Well, the government.
I mean, the stop sign.
Well, the government's stop sign, we got a bigger problem.
Then it's even more dangerous. It's just not really appropriate to put stop signs up for speed control. It, it doesn't usually help.
I remember we discussed about, uh, what purchasing of one, uh, speed.
Yes, it's in the.
Okay. When, when do we think we, could we?
Okay, when, when do we think we, could we put that on a TDOT highway? I mean, something like a seventy or is that to be like on Canada? Can we put it anywhere?
I was planning on putting it on Canada Road. We haven't had a chance, I've been busy with all these projects. We didn't have a chance to, to get that order, but it is in the budget this year, we will buy it this year for sure.
That would be, that would be a big help, I think. Just, it's, if, just, is this the one that flashes or the one that kind of gets your attention? Just the psychology of that, it makes you, even if you're not speeding, it makes you just kind of, oh, okay. Uh, that's kind of what, that's the intention, just make people more alert of what road they're on, just be more conscious of it.
A good driver looks, if someone who wants to speed is going to speed, you know, I still like it, we've got to find some way to stop them. I'm also, thirty miles an hour, that makes an option. It works in car, I make frequent trips out there in half service, especially because my dad's house is going to be sold out there. And going down Peterson Lake, it's a pain, but you know, you're going at thirty miles an hour, you don't want the car to go pops to get you. But it works, it's safe.
Right.
You can turn, you can turn anywhere off on Peterson Lake. And see the, the oncoming traffic's coming, they're doing thirty, you know you can make a left, turn a right, turn yourself. Canada Road, you, you, it's just, it's just, it's, it's not designed for what it's being used for now. And I just think we need to find some way to mitigate those issues until New Canada Road is, is up and running. And we take the signs down because of the cutoff anyways, so things will get better, but I'm just, you know, I'm just concerned. Three fatalities on that road given this year is, is, your city, our size, it's just not good.
Just, just for clarification, that traffic sign deterrent is in the twenty-twenty street aid fund budget this year or it's in another general?
It's in the street aid, I don't have to believe. There's a line item for signs, signs and sign cards, I think is what it's called, it's in street aid. We put in one, I think they're about three to four thousand dollars. And that was not the trailer mounted already, I was looking at the whole mounted, um, that I've seen, I've seen them a lot up north. And, um, and some of them are pretty creative, like, you know, thank you for going thirty-five or, you know, when you get a green light or, um, slow down, slow down, you know.
Part of that one.
Yeah, I mean, there's some that, yeah, there's some that, that aren't just the standard pink and white, so.
I think that'd be a big help as well. Like, if you look at those different things that we all talked about, seat tick and Lakeland Commons, you know, see if we can put that in place. Because that wouldn't break up people pattern of speed there, I guess, like, they'd have to get help along.
Yeah.
Because otherwise it's just a raceway.
Yeah, it is. You know, cop is the first to get my sister's.
I don't know.
Well, highway sixty-four, highway sixty-four is a raceway as well. People coming in from our eastern neighbor and they fly, I, I travel that every day. And travel where that accident was every day. And, um, another problem, and we were discussing this today, is that a lot of people don't know traffic rules because the test to get your driver's license has changed so much. It's now more about DUI laws and the things that, you know, are related to that rather than actual rules of the road. And right at that spot where that accident was, there are double yellow lines that people frequently come into when they're coming west to turn into that Kroger gas station and to that bank, and they're not supposed to. But the entrance into that turning lane is specifically for the person that's turning left into Sprouts or turning left onto electric trucks. And it's, it's called suicide corner, unfortunately, because you risk your life every time you turn and someone's traveling fifty miles an hour and pulling out of businesses. I believe it's just as congested or more congested than any of the places that we discussed before. And it's, you know, high potential for accidents and they're there all the time in that, in that one particular area.
Yeah.
Look at that too, even though they reduced the speed limit by five miles an hour, it's just not enough.
I agree.
There needs to be a protected left turn into Davis Plantation, right there by St. Paul Church. You're risking your life turning there. So I don't know what it takes to appeal to TDOT with the amount of accidents.
And some of that is Memphis, so the signals are owned and maintained by Memphis. And I've talked to City Memphis numerous times over the last four years that I've been back. And they say that it is not warranted to have a protected left turn there, they've told me.
What has to happen, what has to happen to make it warranted? And who do we appeal to?
If that development had occurred, just.
So they would have pushed it.
That would have been enough to trigger that, that's the only thing.
And because it didn't have to stall.
They need to see some of the cars actually travel that way in day.
They claim they've done traffic studies on it.
I'd like to see them.
But that's, you know, that's their traffic engineering department and, um, and I've asked and asked and they, I get the same information back. So, and they just said it's just at this time, it's not warranted. If development went in, they would have them put the bill for it.
But that new day here that's still.
That's, well, that, their entrance is not there.
No, but it is going to, they are going to be coming out onto a raceway and turning left into it on a raceway. It's, it's very scary.
I've been making trips to live with, you know, a few miles of house and get rest there. Just to turn left and turn right, you could have a good will on sixty-four.
I disagree, I don't get on sixty-four very often.
Well, by the way, but it's just, the double, double yellow lines are suggesting, I don't understand, you know, we weren't taught that.
There needs to be, and I know this, there's no way to do this, is a re-education of drivers about just typically rules of the road. And, you know, when you turn left, you turn into the lane closest to you. And when you, you know, I, it's just, people are not educated these days on the rules of the road and why those lines are there. And it's, you know, it's discouraging to know that we have a generation of drivers out there that don't know what all those things mean and are causing accidents and veering into your lane and hitting you head on.
I was going to ask you a recognition after the discussion, I'd like to go to the next one.
Okay. Maybe further discussion on the site. I think we're all passionate about it, so if we're looking for those things, how much, you know, I have some other mixed input, but I don't want to delay on it.
You have emailed it.
Oh, it's a overall, I'm going to do something about it, I can, for sure.
I'd love to just burn somebody's phone line up or fill their inbox up with, with complaints because if they're not going to do anything until they hear from people, maybe that's what we need to appeal to our public and to our citizens to get that started. And for the safety of our citizens and the people that are traveling through our city. We see that there are evident problems that need to be addressed and maybe we need, maybe that's what we need to do is get a, I don't know, a petition or something like that or, you know.
I have, any calls that I've received, especially the day these sixty-four light, I've forwarded. I've given them the numbers to call and, and report it. So they've been hearing it from, from citizens as well, but, I mean, they just fall back on what does their traffic study indicate? And they're looking at accident reports too and, and they just, um, they just claim that it's not warranted. I haven't asked for the documentation myself, but that's what they, they told me repeatedly.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to add a item thirteen to the agenda, discussion and recognition, discussion and recognition of texture.
Josh, Josh, yes. Absolutely, we'll get to that, certainly agree, absolutely. All right, uh, Matt, if you would please read discussion item number eleven.
Discussion on moratorium on New Commons.
All right. This is a topic that, if you could pick, okay, there are twenty things people talk about very passionately on Lakeland. I think it's one topic that actually across the board, want to agree on, uh, about apartments. So if you look up the word apartments definition, there are so many different iterations of what you call multifamily apartments. It actually gets more confusing, it makes it worse. It's, it's kind of like, whoa, what's the difference between this and this? And, uh, I think, but we know what it is and we know what we're trying, what we would rather do developmentally, you know, with commercial or residential or whatever. Or whether it's, uh, integrated or otherwise. But I think, I just want to have a discussion on it, not to necessarily enact it, but have a discussion about it. Because it, it concerns us as far as how it affects enrollment with schools, uh, impact it have on that. Relativity, issues, services and traffic, safety, other things you can, you can go into. But I just want to get that ball rolling, get it started about what we as a city would prefer, whether our stance should be on apartments. And, I mean, if you want to.
I'm just going to defer to the city manager, I mean, I'm sorry, city manager, answer the attorney, but I meant to say city attorney. If I take a look at what Germantown did, the idea was to study kind of its impact on its infrastructure, its ability to service it correctly. And they had a moratorium during, or have a moratorium during that, I believe it's eighteen months for them, phase while they do study. And so I wanted you to kind of answer, one, if you did want to bring forward a resolution and did something similar, if you could talk to me what the parameters would be of the moratorium for them. Better yet, what we really want to know is its impact on possible school system, roadways, things of that nature. How would we outline what we want to know of the study?
Yeah, we, we could certainly bring something forward, you know, the next meeting, if the board was willing to find. But as you are aware, Germantown did something similar, the city of Memphis has a moratorium on, I've drawn a blank now, a specific road about auto-related businesses, they have, they have like twenty acres of them.
Tomorrow.
I can tell you a lot of things. And so it's not something that's typical, would be the first city, even Shelby County, to do something like this. So we could certainly bring something forward, the idea being, except to study the impact as far as density goes, effect on your current services, on your school system. I would suggest, you know, without getting too deep into it, something like that same timeframe, at least to let us study it initially. It'd take probably some input from the schools and kind of projections that they may have or they may look at. But certainly an eighteen-month, two-year moratorium on new, new construction for apartments. And keep in mind, this would not, wouldn't affect existing developments that are in process, that have current entitlements. There's nothing, nothing to do from that standpoint, but just new apartments, new proposed developments that may come in the future during this period. Let's set a moratorium and not consider those. We could certainly put something together and bring it forward consideration if the board wants to, if it is early in the next meeting.
Can you show me what the moratorium, the moratorium would be to do a study, some more studies, we have to fund the study. Do you have any idea what a study like that could cost or what it looks like? I know it's kind of off the air.
We've got someone on the air.
Not to break under the bus. Not to say he has all the answers, but just, just, I also could, I actually have some meaningful input about what this looks like. I'd say every city's you date can be different size, but there are constraints on their services. That's not to say if we could take, like, if you're going to make or sign orders, well, you can't necessarily just take what Germantown did because they have a different road. Just as an example, but certainly something we can look at, have an idea for discussion. I don't know if a week we can have something ready to adopt, but it'll certainly be eighteen months, something, two years perhaps, from the moratorium standpoint. I don't know if we're forced to have anything additionally.
I was just more curious about the study piece of it, if you know.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And so Germantown, a little different from Lakeland's situation, their, the study was actually done in-house. And I was really, really pleased and proud of the work that administration, those administr, across the board, his administration, there was chief of police, there was the fire chief. It was folks, believe it or not, from our performing art, not from our center, our athletic club, who are recognized through the Aldridge system, was being black belt in that type of situation. And, and so there was a group of probably ten of them. Our city administrator suggested that the cost might be around two hundred fifty thousand dollars for that type of study. It was an eighteen-month, well, it really took about a year. And then we extended recently here, terminated, extended the moratorium to include, what, for standalone apartments in our mixed-use or smart road zoning districts. I think the intent is to, ultimately, the, the study found that apartments bear essentially the same burden on emergency services, on schools, on traffic as a single-family residence. Obviously you have those at a higher density, one in a smaller space, and so it is compounded to some extent. But either way, from your question, I mean, I thought was the estimate for what the cost of the, of our.
It's something we could take a slow approach to and maybe not take a huge volume, but we could definitely take a step by saying we'd like to study it. So I would like to see that.
What I would quickly get, five hundred and sixty-six selling the books we left, another two hundred that's in common. So it's time to look at this, you know, because we, we find ourselves in a bind. Probably develop, especially all the, the big huge things, especially within, I'm going to want to put, we want apartments. And it's important, but, but we'd be, we'd pleasure bringing this to the.
Peter? I think we need to look at what is the finite number of apartments that makes sense, we're going to study to do that. But I would caution that we don't stifle development when you have people that want to come and that have the, let's just say, the means to complete their projects and get them done. I say that we do find that finite number to be a first come, first served. And someone's promised an X number and we don't have anything, through planning commission, we don't have anything really permitted to be built that way. Somebody else comes in and is ready to go and permitted build to get first shot at that number of apartments. Because I believe there is that finite number, but I don't want to keep that from encouraging people that might want to put a small number into a very prime development, in a prime spot, to send them off somewhere else to develop, because we need that here. So it's something we want to consider, but I guess so. Do you have another question?
I just want to, I just want you to clarify, those words are, are great. I don't think that when someone has approval, that, you know, it's, it's based on, you could take the allowance and the approval if you need to. So I just wanted you to maybe speak to that a little bit because although that's a great idea, I don't think we can actually practice that.
Yes, so you could get, as far as current entitlements, you know, existing P Ds on books, if those expire and they have to come back and get, basically a regular verbal. But if you have an existing P D that is in process, that's a real good mechanism to take that, certainly not without, without fighting with the.
Thank you for the study.
And current numbers that are rooted in it.
Appreciate it. All right, any further discussion on the apartment number eleven? All right, then, if you would please read discussion item number twelve.
Discussion on complete count committee twenty-twenty census.
Yeah, just quickly, this doesn't need to take a lot of time. As you may recall, I had our representative that serves Shelby County here, a couple meetings back regarding the twenty-twenty census coming up. And one recommendation that the Census Bureau has is for communities to create and form these complete count committees that are really composed of, you know, elected official stakeholders within the community, potentially people that are experts in marketing and/or information technology. The idea of the committee is to. The idea of the committee is to get information in front of our residents with marketing materials about the importance of, when the time comes, go on, click on the link. You can do it now online. If you don't do that, you're going to get a postcard. Make sure you complete the postcard. If you don't do that, you're going, you're going to get a knock on the door. Trying to educate our residents on the importance of what, what, what we're trying to accomplish here, making sure that everyone is accounted appropriately and what that, how that impacts local governments from a per capita funding standpoint. So there's not really a requirement to do such. I'm trying to get some feedback if you would like us to try to formulate this type of committee or we can certainly try to do our best effort in-house, you know, just with the current staff, trying to keep pushing this agenda forward on our social media platforms and our website. We have, at our last, our next LAN concert, I will make sure that we have a table set up with marketing materials for people. And those type of events, like at our Halloween Fest, is that what you call that? Halloween Fest? Those type of events where we got a number of people that are coming together to make sure that we have brochures, pamphlets, and a representative there to answer questions, that type of thing. So that's, that's really the purpose of this committee. It doesn't need to be seven to nine individuals. And then we would be meeting up until, oh, April of next year, when the actual count date is, is scheduled. But trying to get some feedback, how you want us, if you want to do something formally, if you want us to kind of just, um, take the ball from a staff standpoint and just keep moving it forward from a, um, marketing standpoint. Or we could use the EDC.
EDC?
EDCs, thank you, sorry. We could use that committee that's already set and kind of add on to their tasks, if you will, and use that committee and get, use them or the Citizen Advisory Board, something to that effect. So just wanted some quick feedback on that.
How soon do you need it put together, to the committee?
Um, probably in the next month, we really need to be, um, formalized, probably. Our, our rep would come in and do a formal training with the committee and kind of give us some, some guidelines and obviously information to share. But we would, we should be getting this going here fairly, pretty quickly, but.
I know using one of those two committees doesn't necessarily give you the, uh, the skill set that you're looking for. You don't know if they're already on that committee. However, we do have both of those already developed. Do you know what the workload looks like on EDC right now, do they?
Um, we're meeting, obviously, on a monthly basis, going through a lot of recurring things. And I don't think it'd be burdensome to that group to add one more thing to their plate. And it's really, um, we can just add that to their agenda and start going through that process. And I, I don't expect them to man the moves like they have the lamp. I can certainly do that. But just to give, we do have some experts around the table at EDC, I'm thinking of a few in my mind, so that we can lean on from that standpoint. So I think that might be a good landing spot to, at least to get this thing going.
Yeah, diverse backgrounds and a lot of people guys that really know what they're doing and they're just going in their fields, so they make good reviews.
Well, the primary objective of the Citizens Advisory Board is to get news and information out to the citizens in those areas that they are representing. So we can certainly have them spread that information as one of the first, you know, reviews at the first meeting, here's what we discussed. And about the Lakeland Chamber giving the information out to the local businesses as well.
Yep, and I brought that up at their meeting today. And they're very, obviously very supportive of it as well. However, they can partner with us to get businesses out to their members. They're certainly willing to do that, do whatever they can do to help, so that's good. Okay.
Thank you, Shane. And Matt, if you would, please add the, or read the added discussion item number thirteen.
Discussion on Recognition of Cities.
The idea was, all it was a pretty cool, creative deal. And at the end of the day, because of, you know, how it came about, it was Dexter Muller that actually got it done, the table finished with the help of city staff and everything. But Dexter is a part-time consultant, if you will. And usually when we have a big win like this, we show appreciation some way. And so appreciation in my world would be some dollar amounts. So I was hoping we could buy some dollar amounts if you have Dexter saying thanks for bringing all, helping bring all to, to Lakeland.
I'll, I'll second that. He's, he's very, he's become very useful, he has become very useful for us. His being a liaison to businesses, if you ever have a conversation with him, within one minute, a drop, twenty names of people that you may never, ever have the opportunity to make contact with, but he just knows these people. He has a wealth of knowledge.
He doesn't just drop their name. He has a lot of speed dial. He can call them right.
He's impressive. Very impressive. So he's, he's very valuable to our community in trying to kickstart our commercial growth, finding new ways, being creative, getting businesses here, so.
I remember your folks' appropriate, let's do it. He's helped me a world, I went from knowing nothing to know a little more. That's all because of him.
He's definitely an asset to the team here, for sure, without a doubt.
To prepare a resolution, I'll report the number of five thousand dollars.
I agree. All right, that concludes what's on the regular agenda. Announcements, German, that's all we have left. You want to get any announcements? Not hearing none. I will take a motion to adjourn. And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, say no. It's all good. I hope you carry your hammer.